Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, February 6, 2024, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Good morning, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. Please let the record reflect that Supervisor Frost will be absent today.
Thank you very much. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, February 9 at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you very much. Would the clerk please call the first item?
Your first item is public comments relating to matters not on the agenda. And we have four public requests right now. Our first speaker is Catherine Hernandez.
And a reminder to the public before Ms. Hernandez gets to the podium that these are items that are not on the agenda, therefore they have not been noticed, so we cannot engage in any meaningful dialogue back and forth between the Board or discussion. But staff and the Board is listening and taking notes.
Thank you so much. I understand. And I have not done public speaking in years and I'm nervous. So if I stumble over my words, please bear with me.
You're doing great.
Okay. And I'm going to go quickly. Since I only have two minutes, I'm going to skip through some of what I have here. I seek the following resolution from the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. A full review of all the facts in a code enforcement situation, which include more detail than I will be able to provide today. All violations and fines rescinded and close the code enforcement case without prejudice. On or about November 3, a code enforcement officer came out to inspect my property and spoke with my husband. My husband's initial response was "F you," unfortunately. My husband immediately apologized and walked away and went back to speak to the code enforcement officer. I was not at home at the time and as the sole property owner, I followed up with the code enforcement officer on or about November 3 by telephone. During that telephone call, we discussed several items that may or may not be a violation. And I told the code enforcement officer that I would be appealing the alleged violations, to which she immediately responded that I would have to pay $700 to file an appeal. I asked if the fee was refunded if I won the appeal. He replied it was not, that it was a non-refundable fee, which I have since learned is incorrect. This is the first of many misinformation that I have. I have a detailed timeline here that I can submit in writing because I don't have time. But I also did reach out to Supervisor Desmond's office and spoke with a representative there. Her comments to me, although I've submitted five requests and made three phone calls and was told on several occasions that calling or emailing is not going to get me a faster answer, which is also on the recording when you call the office, the code enforcement officer of the day. So I was patient and, you know, followed up about every other week. Her response to me was that I should have called more if I knew there was a deadline, which I was never given the deadline, to file my appeal, insinuating that the miscommunication was on my part. So my appeal rights have been violated. I have received inaccurate information from both the code enforcement officer and the Department of Revenue on several occasions regarding procedure.
Ms. Hernandez, can you wrap up your comments, please?
I am at the very end.
It's past your two minutes.
Okay. I can count at least five incidents of retaliation from the code enforcement officer, the code enforcement officer supervisor, and the District III Special Assistant. My appeal rights and constitutional due process rights have been violated on at least three occasions and my only recourse left is to go to small claims court.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
That concludes my statement.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Pete Spalding.
Good morning and thank you for letting me make some comments. My name is Pete Spalding. I live on Rio Bravo Circle in Supervisor Desmond's district. I'm the mile steward from Mile 11 south of the American River Parkway. I want to say a few words about the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Planned Erosion Control Contract 3B, 4A, and 4B from Howe Avenue to Estates Drive and Mayu Drain. First, I realize all the county supervisors are members of SAFCA. SAFCA and the Central Valley Flood Protection Board are the two non-federal partners in these contracts. If any of you had a hand in getting the Corps to extend the comment deadline, we appreciate your efforts. Second, I want to thank Supervisor Desmond for agreeing to hold a community public meeting on this work. I hope that you can schedule that soon so that people who attend will be able to use what they learn to submit their comments before the February 23 deadline. We'll certainly help you to publicize that. These are not emergency contracts. There is no immediate threat to the integrity of these levees. So let's take the time to get data-driven, evidence-based protection without destruction. We believe that a targeted erosion analysis coupled with nature-based, less invasive construction methods will result in far better erosion protection without the destruction of acres of viperian vegetation, killing of over 500 trees, including some heritage oaks that are older than this country. Again, as Board members of SAFCA and working with the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, you all have the ability to improve this contract. This can include taking more time to get public input, running more recent hydrology models, or even pulling Contract 3B out of the package so that the other components are not delayed. I ask that you work with the CV, the Central Valley Flood Protection Board counterparts, who as the lead non-federal agency have to vote on the SEIS and the SEIR. Ask them to conduct an open public meeting with core technical staff present to hear concerns, answer questions, and follow that with a public hearing so that all the comments can be officially recorded. It's better to take the time to do this right and work to achieve erosion control flood protection and preserve the crown jewel of Sacramento, the American River Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding.
Next, Nancy.
Thank you. I'm here today as a person who needs help, as being a responsible citizen, and what I can do next. We're working with the Corps of Engineers, Pete has explained, with this upcoming incredible construction going on on our levees. During a very short public review period of highly technical engineering document for Contract 3B, the upcoming levy reconstruction of the Lower American River, we found it difficult and often impossible to reach the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to obtain information. The Corps states they have opportunities for public participation, including website updates and formal and informal meetings with interested members of the public, community groups, and individuals as requested. I attended three meetings from December through January hosted by the Corps. Forty chats were entered in one virtual meeting held with the Lower American River Task Force and the Water Forum. We were promised that the Corps would respond to these chat comments. In the other two virtual meetings to present the project in detail, the Corps had over 150 people attending each. Comments were made and recorded but not responded to. In these last two meetings, there were numerous requests for future in-person meetings. Seventy percent of the calls I made to the Corps' public affairs line, I learned again and again that no one is available. I can leave a message, which I normally do, but rarely get a return call. Messages do not get returned. After trying to digest this 1,700-plus-page document in two months, it's too much. We have asked for help in understanding the document and trying to be responsible in our review and understanding of the details herein. We want to work with the Corps, but we are fighting to get basic information. We ask for more willing participation from the Corps to discuss this project and cooperatively come to the best flood protection plan for this river and its environs. Thank you for listening. Thank you for the work you do. I look forward to getting together with the Corps before our due date, which is February 23. And I did send a video to all of your offices for you to just look at the general issue we're dealing with. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Our last comment is Ivory Watts.
Two minutes. Good morning, Supervisors. We have all met many times before, but I am Ivory Watts from SEIU Local 2015, representing over 32,000 members here in Sacramento County. While they are busy caring for our communities, older adults, and people with disabilities, I am here on their behalf to speak directly to each one of you. For the past year and four months, our bargaining team has worked tirelessly to reach an agreement with you that will help providers afford to live in Sacramento. We've been fighting for improvements on training, safety, health care, and wages. We have done our best to work with you while compromising against ourselves. While our providers gave up expanding health care, I'm proud that we prevented any cutbacks to their already modest health care plan. After three concessions on our wage proposals, your team hasn't proposed giving Sacramento caregivers what they need to survive. With these health care protections in our current proposal, our providers will still earn far below what is needed to survive in Sacramento and yet they are still willing to meet you more than halfway. I know you're concerned about the budget deficit. Trust us, so are we. But we are here making yet another concession to our proposal. Ultimately, the county has an obligation to prioritize seniors and the disabled and people struggling to take care of them or accept its role in putting more people in the ER, out on the street, or unemployed. So as you enter into closed session, I encourage you to think deeply about what you are asking Sacramento IHSS providers to do, which is survive on poverty wages while protecting and caring for our community. Today, we are giving you the opportunity to accept our compromise, but our members stand firm with this offer. So in closing, I just want to compromise here. You wanted to compromise and this is it? We as the leaders of SEIU 2015 have to now tell our members that poverty wages are the best that we can do? Our hope today is that the five of you can agree that our proposal is the least that you can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watts.
That concludes your public comments for off-agenda.
Thank you and thank you all for being out here this morning. That takes us to consent.
For your consent matters, Items 2 through 35, I do not have any notes for you.
Okay, and I see Mr. Hume has jumped in. Mr. Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to make a couple of comments on Items Number 21 and 23, please.
Okay, I'll read those into the record. For Item 21, this is the authorization to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Wilton Ranch area rancher. I cannot say that word.
Rancheria.
Rancheria, thank you. A federally recognized Indian tribe and sovereign nation to establish a framework for cooperation related to public safety and law enforcement. And I'll read 22 as well. This is a...
23.
23. An authority to amend and increase an expenditure agreement with Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District.
Great, thank you. First of all, on Item 21, I just want to thank Deputy Executive Jones and the folks from our Sheriff's Department. Our office was contacted by the Wilton Rancheria Tribe and they put this agreement together in record time, I would say. I mean, literally, within, inside of a month to get it on the agenda. And while it seems like a small thing to enter into this MOU, believe it or not, Sacramento County has one of the highest rates of murdered and missing indigenous people in the state of California and one of the highest in the nation. So it's not a statistic we should be proud of and I think anything we can do to help with our tribal partners. There will be a summit on the 12th that's going to be attended by over 400 people, including 30 tribal leaders and 20 legislators, and then they're going to have an advocacy day on the 13th. So it's an important issue and I just really, it did not go unnoticed how nimble staff truly was in reacting and getting this done. So thank you. And then on Item 23, this is authorizing money expenditure with SAC Metro Fire for them to continue their mobile integrated health program, which as we heard in the presentation that they did before this Board, I think it's a critical piece to bringing down our APOT numbers and getting those emergency rooms functioning more efficiently. And so I certainly support it and I thank it for being on the agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor. I don't see any others. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the Board on an item on consent? Hearing and seeing none?
We don't have anyone signed up.
We have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Hume.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Your first presentation is the Presentation of Resolution Recognizing the 50th Anniversary of the Sacramento Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi.
Mr. Desmond.
Mr. Chair, invite Kaheem Morton, Pole Mark Larry Lewis, and Vice Pole Mark Justin Margolis to please join me at the podium. Well, thank you, my fellow Board members, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to provide this presentation today and for signing the resolution honoring the 50th anniversary of the Sacramento chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi. Now I'm going to just read a few things from the resolution here, not the whole thing. But before I start, I do want to call out my friend Kaheem Morton here, who has been the chair, serving as the Chair of our Community Review Commission for the past two years, but who disappointed me greatly last week when he said that he was going to be stepping down. So appreciate your service, Kaheem. I didn't want to forget about that. But whereas the Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated was founded January 5, 1911, on the campus of Indiana University. And 50 years ago, on February 22, 1974, the Sacramento Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi was established in Sacramento. Whereas Kappa Alpha Psi is comprised of men of achievement and the fraternity has become one of the leading male organizations in the county, contributing to the improvement of the quality of life in the African-American community. And I won't read all the "whereas" as talking about all your community involvement and all your accomplishments. But I'll finish with the last "whereas." The contributions that the Sacramento alumni of Kappa Alpha Psi have made to the betterment of the communities and families of Sacramento, county, and beyond are invaluable and reflect an organization devoted to the highest ideals of community service. And so therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, hereby recognizes the 50th anniversary of the Sacramento Alumni Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity and commends the vital role it has played in improving the quality of life for African-Americans and further offers the fraternity best wishes for continued success in the future. So I'll turn it over to you to say a few words. Darrell, there's a resolution.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond, and for all your efforts in regards to this. And thank you, Brother Kaheem, for all your efforts in regards to getting this. Can I have all the Brothers of Kappa Alpha Psi please stand? So this is a great honor and privilege for us as members of this great auspicious organization. And we again thank the County Board of Supervisors for your indulgence in regards to this and your honoring of us. Brothers, just know that we in the Sacramento community, we just are grateful and we continue to do the work that we plan on doing for our community and making sure that we are a representative of the men that we are. Our founders wanted us to be in this organization and in this community. So again, thank you so much. And Brother Kaheem, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, just a few words. Supervisor Desmond, thank you very much for the time today. And yes, I've really enjoyed the time, you know, serving as part of my duty with the County Commission. I'd like to thank the county staff for that and supervisors as well. And we really enjoy, you know, giving back and really making sure that we're trying to better ourselves and the community on a regular basis. And we'd like to thank you all for your efforts, you know, in that and continue to be partners with you. Thank you.
Take a vote?
Yeah.
Oh, you want to give the fifth? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, gentlemen. Mr. Morton, thank you for your service as the first Chair of the Community Review Commission. Appreciate it. You led with a steady hand at the beginning and it's much appreciated. And you join a long list of people who have disappointed Supervisor Desmond. Next item, please.
Item 37 is the California Capital Air Show 2023 Impact Report and Presentation.
Hi. Good morning. I'm Darcy Brewer. I serve this nonprofit organization as executive director. And I'd like to introduce three of our 19 Board members. Tim Murphy, our Vice Chair, Michael Faust, our Treasurer, and your appointee to the Air Show Board, Felipe Fuentes, as well as Angela Terry, our Director of Operations and Educational Director.
Great. Good morning, Chairman Kennedy and Supervisors. Tim Murphy, I've been on the Air Show Board for, I think, more than 12 years now. And I want to preface my comments by saying, a number of years ago, the Board of the Air Show did a strategic retreat and it was our objective to become one of the top five air shows in the United States. This last December, we had the pleasure of attending the International Conference of Air Shows, their annual conference. And I think I can safely say that we have hit that goal and that we have brought this region, not just one of the top five air shows in the United States, but in North America. So we can be very proud of that. I'd like to give a little bit of a recap on how our show this last year went. It was a 17th annual show and by and large, it was one of the most successful shows that we've ever seen. We had over 105,000 attendees over the two-day period where we had the, where we recognized the 70th anniversary of the United States Air Force Thunderbirds, which was a repeat performance for them. They've come back to the show many times and they just put on a spectacular show as always. One of the other opportunities that we took was to recognize the Cold War legacy that Mather Air Force Base has played in its history. We do that by bringing historic aircraft out and we had a fantastic occasion to have General Douglas MacArthur's Connie airplane, which flew with the Lockheed P-38. For aviation buffs, to see that type of military history flying in the air is really something special. And this was an especially great treat for them to have that historic aircraft on hand. One of the other things that we were also able to do this last year was in the mission of our air show, which is to highlight STEM and aviation education into this community. This last year, we served over 2,300 students with STEM educational opportunities through our excellent programs, which are Positive Altitude, which gives the opportunity for students to have a first ride in an airplane with a, and get a first flying lesson to hopefully ignite that passion for them. We have our STEM Expo that we perform at the air show and this year we did a special Girls in Aviation Day to highlight the opportunities for young women in the aviation industry. So with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Felipe Fuentes.
Great, thank you, Tim. And let me just begin by thanking all of you for appointing me to the Sacramento Board of the Capital City Air Show. It's a real honor for me to represent Sacramento County in particular because I grew up chasing airplanes up and down the state. And so to be able to represent my new home county is a real honor for me. But even more exciting about sort of what this show has done is what it's going to do this year. The 2024 show is really going to be out of this world. We're going to do something different. The show will take place in July, July 13 and 14. And you're probably wondering, oh, boy, the summer. Well, let me tell you why we're doing it this summer. We have a real opportunity here in Sacramento to capture one of the most engaging shows on the planet and that is the Frecci Tricolori. Now, Darcy tells me that we all have to learn Italian in short order here to prepare for our friends, but this is the Italian Air Force's 10-jet aerobatic unit that will be coming to Sacramento. And in fact, it is the first visit to the United States in more than 30 years and the only location in the western United States where fans will be able to take part in this full air show performance and to be able to see these colorful jets up close. And did I mention that there are 10 of them performing? So it's going to be really spectacular. But as always, we're going to have a tremendous amount of things for families and people to see. The awesome attractions, the interactive displays. We will, as we always do, entertain the crowds with up to four hours of nonstop, high-energy performance. All very safe, all choreographed, and all really, really exciting. But the part that makes this show in particularly exciting is that back by popular demand is going to be the night show. That's right, night show. So you can imagine for a second here, in 2018, when we celebrated Mather's 100th birthday, we had a night show then. It was a real hit. And now we're going to have a show again with this awesome team that's choreographed and has pyromusical fireworks on both days. So very, very exciting. We can't wait to rock the skies with y'all again. It's your participation, cooperation, and support that make this such a great show. And I, as I started here, am just really grateful to be able to represent you and the mission of this organization, which by the way, is all volunteer and with tremendous staff. So with that, my colleague, Michael Faust, will say a few more words.
Thank you very much. Michael Faust, a member of the Board. Truly pleasure and honor to be part of this Board. It's a great organization, doing great things. But we can't do it without the partnership that we have with Sacramento County and the Sacramento County Airport System. Your generous support not only allows this incredible event to occur, but it allows us to have our year-round STEM events to occur as well. And with the airport's help, we've been able to utilize your hangars over the years as our actual classrooms. And we want to actually stop and thank not only you, but the airport systems and Cindy Nichols in particular because of her and her entire team, we can actually do what we do on a day-to-day basis. And it wouldn't actually be possible without Director Nichols, the airport system, Mather Airport, and your continued financial support of this operation. Because of you, we can do what we do and we want to thank you very much for doing that. And on behalf of the California Capital Air Show Board of Directors, the United States Air Force Thunderbirds Jet Demonstration Team, all the military and civilian performers who flew our most recent show, we have presentos for you to commemorate our crew's entire heartfelt gratitude for all you do to keep us soaring. Thank you very much. Would you like to join us and accept them, Mr. Chairman?
Is there another speaker?
Nope.
Okay, well, I'm sure that others, and I see others are punching in. I'll say, great news on the night show. I was out of the country last time. I came back and just everybody was raving about it and saying, when's it coming back? So that's fantastic. And, you know, the work that, the most important work, I think, that you all do is the STEM work that you do. the STEM work that you do. I know the others, the sizzle to the steak, but that's really what this is about. So thank you so much for what you do, 365 days a year, not just on a weekend. Mr. Desmond.
And let me just pile on with my gratitude and thanks as well for everything you do. It is such a wonderful airshow and such a huge source of pride. And I agree, just getting young people to understand how this industry is relevant to their lives with some of the STEM education is just terrific, how you lure them in with the, with the sizzle, and then you get them really interested in something that can really change their lives. So thank you for that commitment. And even though, Felipe, I think you mentioned that you think the night show would be the most exciting thing, to me, the most exciting thing is going to be to see how the chair reacts to a two Gs upside down in that bonanza.
You'll be sitting right next to me. Mr. Serna.
Thank you. So I'll extend certainly our deep sense of gratitude for all that you do to bring this amazing airshow to our community and to our constituents. As I think all of you know, I'm out there every year with, with my wife, and we certainly enjoy all that the show has to offer. But in particular, we really enjoy the vintage World War II aircraft. So, Darcy, I want to know, how many P-51s are we scheduled to have this year?
A bushel.
It's good. Very good. All right, very good. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Well, those of you that know me know that my dad was a pilot and an officer in the Air Force. And so I spent my formative years as a toddler with VIP access to airshows. I got a picture in the cockpit of a C-5 Galaxy, and I had one of those things from the, from the Thunderbirds personalized to me. And, you know, when he died in the line of duty, that left a little bitterness on my heart, and so I turned away from airshows because of the traumatic memory that exposed me. However, a couple of years ago, I came back, and one, I realized just how freaking much I love airshows. But more importantly, I realized there's no better way for me to honor his memory than to expose young minds, one, to aviation, but also to the STEM and the other programs that you do, to encourage them to explore, to think big, and to dream high. And having had the opportunity to participate in one of those expos really opened me up to the fact that this is a means to an end for a larger program that most of us don't get to enjoy the flashiness of. And so thank you for all that you do. I certainly, as long as I'm a supervisor, I'm going to put my full-throated support behind you, and I can't wait to see the night show this year. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. And, you know, I think that this board would be terrifically remiss if we were to not, you know, move over that way, Michael. There we go. Now we got the real dynamic duo here. You guys are great, but they're the ones who make it happen. So Darcy and Angela. Thank you for your efforts every year. I don't know how the two of you do it, but it's a phenomenal effort, and thank you so much for your work. So. Next item, please.
Item 38 is the Beach Hills Apartment Project: Approval of $2,465,000 Loan Commitment Comprised of Affordable Housing Funds with Pacific Housing Incorporated.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Whitney Hinton, Program Manager with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. Staff is requesting approval of loan commitment in the amount of $2,465,000 of affordable housing funds for Beach Hill Apartments project. This is a new construction workforce project with one split three- and four-story building located at 8789 Greenback Lane in Orangeville. There will be one manager's unit and 28 ones, twos, and three-bedroom units ranging from 30% to 60% of area median income. On-site amenities will include a community room, a laundry facilities, bike parking, open-area turf, bocce bar, bocce ball court, and a play structure. The developer is Pacific Housing, Inc., who has experience in affordable housing. They will be applying for 9% tax credits this February. SHRA has approved DOMAS Management Company as the property management team. Resident services will be provided by Pacific Housing, Inc., who will provide 10 hours of onsite resident services per week. That includes after-school programming. In closing, staff is recommending approval of a loan commitment in the amount of $2,465,000 of affordable housing funds for the new construction of Beach Hill Apartments, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comments for this item.
Okay. Well, I'm sure if Supervisor Frost were here, she would enthusiastically state how excited she is for this project, as, as we all are. This is one more step toward meeting the needs of our affordable housing in Sacramento County. So thank you for, to all of SHRA and your staff and your efforts for your work.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, second by Supervisor Hume. Please vote.
Unanimous vote for those members present.
Thank you.
All right. For item 39, this is County Service Area Number One, Zone One, Public Hearing on the Bradshaw Christian, or sorry, Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for Bradshaw Christian School.
Good morning, members of the board. Joe Grasic with County Engineering here to present this item. So the Bradshaw Christian School is on nine existing parcels located north and west of the intersection of Bradshaw and Calvine Roads. And the project consists of expansion of the existing school, construction of dormitory housing, and associated site improvements. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding of street and safety light maintenance, which is provided by County Service Area Number One for unincorporated county. As a result, the project proponent submitted an application to initiate the benefit category change process. And in response to this application, a ballot and notice were mailed to the property owners on December 22nd. The project's nine parcels are all currently in the safety light only or street and safety light non-residential category and collectively pay $626.58 annually in CSA1 service charges. The proposed change for eight of the nine parcels is to the enhanced street and safety light non-residential category with a collective annual service charge of approximately $2,767.36. One of the parcels has no public frontage and will remain in the safety light only category with an annual service charge of $2.56. And if there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral objections, protests, and testimony, and close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Thank you, Joe. Is there any questions from the board? I will say that this is a very unique project. It's very exciting for South Sacramento, so thank you. With that, I will open up the public hearing. Is there any member of the public at this time like to address the board on this item?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, hearing none, seeing none. We will close the public hearing. And would you please tabulate the protest ballots?
I will, thank you. Okay, we've received one ballot from BBC Enterprise LLC for parcel numbers 121109001, 2678910112, and the site address is 9555 and 9601 Calvine Road, and 8280 and 8324 Bradshaw Road. And they are in favor of the proposed changes.
You were just going to stretch out that suspense, weren't you? That being said, Joe?
Yes, and so now that there is no majority protest, I have to read in the fill-ins for the resolution. So in Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests. In Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category and 0% was in opposition.
Thank you very much. We now have the resolution as amended, and the chair will move adoption of the resolution as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Okay, for item 40, this is the modification to Condition 8 of the Mosaic Law Use Permit Amendment, an annual review and report to the Board of Supervisors on the Mosaic Law Congregation's yearly report for events held between April 26 and April 25.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Kimber Gutierrez, and I am a senior planner with Planning and Environmental Review. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation today, but I did want to provide a brief overview of the annual review and report on the Mosaic Law Congregation's yearly report and the request condition modification by the applicant. On April 26 of 2022, the board did deny an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a use permit amendment and design review to allow non-congregational event center use of the Mosaic Law Congregation and Shalom School. The project site is located at 2,300 Sierra Boulevard in the Arden Arcade community. The board approved the use permit amendment with several conditions meant to ensure that nuisances and impacts experienced by nearby residents from prior unpermitted non-congregational events were avoided. One of these conditions, Condition 8, was added at the appeal hearing, and it was to set up a reporting mechanism to ensure that the project proponent was complying with project conditions and also to gauge potential nuisances and impacts experienced by nearby residents from the newly expanded uses. The purpose of the annual report is to allow the board to initiate revocation or modification to the use permit amendment if deemed necessary. So with the dismissal of this first annual report, the project proponent has requested that the board consider a modification to Condition 8. This is to eliminate the payment of a significant fee, so it was originally a board review fee, now going down to basically paying for staff's time on an hourly basis. And then a formal hearing before the board if all conditions have been complied with in the identified duration. So staff has prepared modifications to Condition 8, and I've provided underline and strike through in your board letter to reflect the request. And then for the first yearly report, that was submitted to the county on May 16 of last year, staff has reviewed the yearly report for compliance and has determined that the facility was, has demonstrated that they are meeting the conditions outlined in the use permit amendment. We've also reviewed the proposed modifications and find that the revisions would not alter the ultimate reporting mechanism that was established in Condition 8, but would rather just be altering the processing fees and alternatives in reporting to the board. I did notice that Attachment 4, which was pretty much me showing my work that they have complied with the conditions, got cut off. So I think you guys have been provided the revised version of that, which should be four pages and not one. And I've highlighted the text that was not included. But based on all of that review, staff does recommend that the board modify Condition 8 of the use permit amendment and find that the Mosaic Law Congregation has complied in good faith with the terms and conditions of the use permit. So that concludes my overview. I'm available for questions, and I believe Brian Holloway is also in attendance, who can speak on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holloway, would you like to say anything at this point on, briefly?
Very briefly, yeah. Good morning, Chair Kennedy, members of the board, Brian Holloway, Holloway Land Company, representing Mosaic Law Congregation. First thing I'd like to do is thank Supervisor Desmond and his chief of staff for helping us move this workload from the planning staff and the clerk of the board to Mosaic, where it belongs under this condition. So thank you very much for that. And then also, I'd like to thank Kimber for her hard work helping wordsmith this change. And with that, ready for take any questions.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Holloway, at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that has any comments or, you want to wait till after public, okay. Any member of the public that would like to address the board at this time on this item?
We do have one public comment.
Please come forward. I assume you're Ms. Christopherson?
Christopherson, yes.
Christopherson.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank PER for their role in assessing adherence to the conditions of Mosaic Law's use permit and their very meticulous overview. Many neighbors were concerned that the modification of Condition 19 might, Condition 8 might be the elimination of this condition. And this is because the posting just last week of the agenda for this hearing created a sense of anxiety in our neighborhood. It is recommended that such information be released to the public a minimum of one month in advance of a hearing, especially of this particular set of conditions in our neighborhood. We remind the board that the problems with Mosaic law activities spanned five years from 2014 to 2019. We made, we were made many promises during this period that they would do better over the years, and Condition 8 is very important to our community. And if, in the future, there is any attempt to throw it out, I can assure you that the membership of our neighborhood would absolutely be here in much more numbers than myself. I am here representing them as I was specifically the secretary, so to speak, of our community when we brought forward the appeal. So do know that our neighborhood continues to be very involved in this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Christopherson. Any other public comments?
That concludes your public comments.
Okay. Mr. Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, thank you for the public comment. I'll make sure, I mean, you follow up with my office. If you'd like, we could work with you on a way to push the information out about what we are voting on here today. And I want to also thank Kimber, who's been just really great, and the entire staff on working through this Mosaic law issue, and certainly Brian, you're part of that, and others. I think we put some really novel and efficient mechanisms in place as part of this condition use permit to make sure that community needs are addressed, that they have a venue to register those community concerns and issues. And what I, you know, I'm very supportive of this today. I think it, it still stays within the spirit of the condition, of course, in terms of the reporting requirements. And most importantly, it does not preclude the board from taking appropriate action if we see issues relating to it. So thank you again, and I'm in strong support. And with that, I will move approval of the item.
Thank you. The chair will second. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right, well done.
Item 41 is to approve the Food and Beverage Concession Proposal Evaluation Panel Recommendations for the Sacramento International Airport and authorize the Director of Airports to negotiate and execute food and beverage concession agreements with the selected food and beverage operators.
Morning, Ms. Nichol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, supervisors. I'm Cindy Nichol, Director of Airports, and today I'm here with Andrew Durkey, who's our airport manager over concessions. This is the first time Andrew will have presented to the board, and he's not nervous at all. When we started this process back in 2022, we set clear goals for our concession program. First, we wanted partners who excel in customer service and share our vision of SMF as a gateway to this region and Sacramento's farm-to-fork movement. We also wanted to provide a variety of dining options and, options that showcase the various cuisines and reflect the diversity and the, and the preferences of our customers. For value, we wanted to see menus that cater to the different budgets and tastes, providing, providing real value for economy-minded customers, elevated experiences for more discerning customers, and healthy options. Excuse me. I'm on the wrong slide, aren't I?
It's okay.
Thanks, thanks, there.
See what experience will do for you?
Yeah, really. I hit the wrong button, yeah, okay. All right, so, let's start again. So we are excited to be recommending this program for food and beverage concessions for terminals A and B at Sacramento International Airport, our SMF. Some current agreements expire in March, others in July, and the rest in October. This is really the first refresh that we've had for our concessions at the airport in 12 years. So for this round, we concentrated on 18 locations that are mostly beyond security and that happen to be the more lucrative opportunities for concessionaires. Upon your approval, we'll phase in these new concessions to ensure that we always have food and beverage offered for our customers, as well as coffee in particular. So we will be starting with the vacant spaces, and there are some new spaces, actually, that we're designating for food and beverage. And we expect all 18 locations to be open by mid to late 2025. In a minute, Andrew will talk about the process that we conducted to do outreach, which started a year before we issued the RFP. The RFP was issued in July, and in October, by the due date, we received 34 proposals, overwhelming interest that reflects excitement about working with the airport, serving our customers and our passengers, as well as our employees. In the, in the, excuse me, the proposals were reviewed and scored by a five-member panel that included two representative- that included two representatives from the Sacramento area community and economic development organizations, an airline station manager, as well as two folks from the airport department. Now, I won't talk about experience again, because you already heard that spiel. For value, as I said, we wanted to provide menus that meet the needs of people with different budgets, tastes, and provide real value for people who are economy-minded, as well as, as I said, elevated experiences for more discerning customers. Regarding opportunity, we wanted to provide opportunities for small, local, and disadvantaged businesses, as well as operators that are, operate at the national level that can bring in national brands, and we wanted them to be great places to work. Finally, with regard to innovation, we wanted to see a progressive mindset with new agile businesses, new terms and practices, and partners that embrace technology and new ways to better serve our customers. So with that, I'll turn it over to Andrew.
Thank you much, Cindy. I don't know why we had to go after the jets, right?
I know.
I mean, this was poorly planned on our part. So the food and beverage RFP was released on July 7, but we, as Cindy said-
You want to get in the middle of the two microphones?
Oh, get in the middle, okay.
This is hazing.
That's good. Cindy noted that the process started for the food and beverage RFP long before the actual release date. A lot of that related to the fact that COVID changed a lot of the metrics, changed a lot of things for operators, and so we needed to reach out to the community, see who is interested in the process, and see what business terms made sense post-COVID. So in July, well, not just July, but in the summer of 2022, we began reaching out to over 200, I think it added up to 241 organizations locally and within the industry. And then we led that into an outreach event where we invited the community out to the airport, restaurateurs, breweries, wineries, and we had 30 attend in August. Again, this was quite ahead of our release date, but we wanted to make sure people knew and could begin to prepare for our RFP. Once we had taken care of that, we wanted to really do a robust effort of data collection to figure out what the community wanted to see, what our passengers wanted to see, and also importantly, what the employees of the airport really valued within the food program. And so we conducted three surveys, one for the employee group specifically, secondly, a survey for the passengers flying through the airport, and another that really focused a little bit more on the community more broadly. We got over 3,000 responses. That survey really helped us figure out what we needed to do, what holes we had in the program, and how we should package going forward. And as we got close to the RFP release date, that July 7 date, we held another outreach event, this time not at the airport, because we found that the, the numbers were coming up a little bit, and so we had an off-site outreach event with 140 attendees representing at least 100 companies, and we're so thankful for that participation. So the survey process, again, really helped inform what we were looking for. The employee groups really wanted to see, you know, both public and employees wanted to see variety, but the employee groups really wanted an affordable option with quick service. You know, they're coming out there on their lunch break, they need something that they can turn around pretty quickly. The public, while they still wanted variety, they valued a little bit more of the health and quality focus while still being the right mix of value and cost. And then we opened, we asked an open-ended question, if you could have anything at the airport, what would you like? And so this word cloud sort of broadly represents what we found to be the desires of all the groups, employees, public, and those traveling through our airport. Some of these items we had some of, for example, Mexican, but it's also a piece that we couldn't miss within our program, right? There's also words up here that represent clear holes within our program. We see, I don't know, five, six different references, Asian, Korean, Chinese, Thai. Clearly, there's an interest in having Asian broadly category within our airport. And, yeah. So with that, we packaged our program into eight different packages for 18 spaces. I'm going to talk through the brands that we're recommending for award today and those companies that are being recommended at award. I'm going to use a term, though, today called ACDBE. I just want to quickly define before we move forward. That is, that is a term you might recognize from construction, DBE. The FAA runs a airport concessions disadvantaged business enterprise program, where they essentially ask airports to set a goal for their disadvantaged business participation, and we set our goal at 15%. So we'll come back to that in a minute. But what we are recommending today is that HMS Host be awarded Package 1 and 6, which includes Starbucks in both Terminal A, Wendy's in both Terminal A, sorry, Terminal A and B for both, Cafe Bernardo in B, and through Package 6, Magpie Cafe, Centro Casino Mexicana, and New Hell Visha Brewing. And then Package 2, we are recommending High Flying Foods with Nyx Taco, Temple Coffee, and Bach. Package 3, we're recommending West Coast SMF LLC, which is West Coast Sour Dough for both Terminal A and B. Package 4, we are recommending Bamboza South Waterfront LLC, which is operating the Bamboza Vietnam Kitchen and Bar Concept. For Package 5, we are recommending Rylo Management LLC for Sidewalk Juice, again, both in Terminal A and B. We already spoke to 6 for HMS Host, so skipping to 7, we are recommending Rylo Management operating One Speed Pizza. And finally, for Package 8, Fly With Breeze operating Midtown Spirits. So within these packages, you see some ACDBE numbers represented there. I just want to speak for a second on, again, what that means to us and what that means to those proposers. HMS Host, for example, has a number of 21% there, but what's not shown in that number is that, you know, the Tu family sitting in the audience here have been with the airport for something over 20 years, and are ACDBE partner that's operated already at the airport. These are real people being given an opportunity through this program, and then certainly Bamboza, Vietnam Kitchen and Bar, and Rylo, 100% women-owned businesses. We're really excited to see that. And the result in total is that we've thoroughly exceeded that ACDBE goal of ours. Our goal is 15%. This is coming in at 38%. I'm excited about that.
That's amazing.
Yeah? We set another goal of 30% small business inclusion, not a, not a specific FAA goal, our own goal, of 30%, and we also exceeded that at 44%. Just before I move on from this slide, not mentioned here, this package of proposals and our current operation represents over 300 current employees at the airport within the concessions program. We've done a couple things, recognizing that this is going to be a lot of transition for those employees. We've done a couple things that we hope will help that transition, one being building a really structured phasing plan to ensure that units are open at all time and jobs remain open and available. The second being, we are requiring our proposers to sign a employee retention policy that ensures those current employees in good standing have a first, you know-
Park giving preference for-
Yeah, first preference, exactly. So just wanted to mention that. So that's the, the details of the recommendation here. To see how it comes together, what I'm excited about is these are recommended companies with their brands, we've already run through them, but how I see this coming together, this is concourse A or Terminal A. The little cutout to the left is a pre-security space. I really see this as being that option for every budget, every taste, and a really more holistic approach to dining than we currently have. We have Asian through the Bamboza concept, West Coast Sour Dough, which is a soup salad sandwich concept. When you look across this, you really see that we have a diversity of options for our Terminal B, more things to be excited about. Right when you walk through TSA in Terminal B, you're going to be welcomed by Temple Coffee, a beloved local coffee brand. And while we still have Starbucks for those passengers who look for that in almost any airport, we're really excited to highlight some really fantastic local brands across We have to talk about money as well, the money of this program in terms of revenue to the airport. There's some estimating going on here, but the note being, we estimate for 2026, if our current program were to continue operating through 2026, how would that compare to the proposed program that you have in front of you today? And what that looks like is roughly $2.5 million more from this program. Some of that is because we're adding on new spaces. So the Sidewalk Juice represents a brand new space for the airport, the Temple Coffee I just mentioned, a brand new space for the airport. So there's new revenue from new spaces, but you can also see that the like-to-like locations also represent more revenue. And then with that, we know that we have about 320 employees currently within the concessions program. Our estimates are that we need about 70 more employees to fulfill those new spaces and support that revenue, so that's really fantastic for our concessions group. And finally, I just want to thank the concessions team, Renata Dare, Mike Gladwell, and newly added to our Christine, our team Christina, thank you so much for all your efforts in making this happen. I also want to thank all the proposers who took part. We received 34 proposals through this process. Many companies took part. We're coming before you with a recommendation today, but that doesn't mean we're not thankful for everyone who took part. We really appreciate it. And with that, I would like to recommend that the Board approve the packages that are before you today, approve the resolution items, and finally, approve the Director of Airports to negotiate and execute those related agreements.
Thank you very much. Any questions with the Board at this time? Mr. Serna.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. As always, it's very detailed and informative. You started the presentation with a citation of kind of the, the values of the airport in terms of some of the general criteria that would be applied through what is obviously a very methodical process. And there was, I think, on one of your slides, mention of you want, you know, jobs to be well-compensated with, you know, appropriate benefits, which I'm pleased to hear. Was there any general or specific consideration for labor friendliness by proposers or experience by proposers when it comes to represented employees?
So if I understand your question, it's, we had in our methodologies that we wanted good jobs for our staff. Is there anything in there that we put in for labor within the agreement? And I think what you might be speaking to is we have a policy that we have every one of our proposers sign, which is a request for labor peace agreement if a labor union were to reach out to them, that they are expected to sign a labor peace agreement within 15 days of that contract execution.
Was there any other kind of anecdotal, I don't know, discussion or interest in, in understanding past histories of some of these proposers at other airports and their, their histories with their labor representatives there?
That was not a consideration that we, that we looked into. Of course, we do reference checks for everybody, so we did not feel that there was anybody who we would be concerned about being a good partner with us.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other members of the Board at this time? Okay, I'll ask a follow-up on that question. Let's just put it out there, because it's public record, there's concern over Rylo, and who, we did overlook another company who was, who scored higher. Maybe you could specifically address why it is that we did not follow typical protocol of going with a higher score?
The panel itself operated separate from airport management, so during the actual RFP evaluation process, the panel was reviewing those proposals in front of them just with the knowledge that was in those proposals. Now, separate from that, the airport management had been working with Famous Familia for well over a year with multiple rounds of payment default with official letters regarding that default. And at the time that those recommendations came from the panel to the airport director to review, Famous Familia at that time was, again, in default, and it didn't feel like the right choice to award a brand that was currently in default within a new package.
I'll, I'll just mention one other thing, which is the folks from Rylo are here and are signed up to speak, I believe.
Okay.
And we did talk with the concession managers at both San Francisco International Airport as well as Oakland, and we understood that they all felt very supportive of Rylo, felt that they were actually, I will say that they went out of their way to say that they were one of their better concessionaires.
And even if, I guess, part of my, my question here is because it's an interesting, you know, airport concessions is different than just about anywhere else in the, in which you have the proposer and you have the concept. You know, so ultimately, who's responsible, the, the concept and, you know, the, the company, the face, the local, by the way, thank you for all the local, but, or the proposer, when there are conflicts, when there's problems, if there's, let's say, health and safety issues, who, who is it that ultimately the airport holds accountable for such things?
It's more the proposer.
Okay.
And I will tell you that we have a lot of progressive sanctions in our agreement. We also have provisions for basically terminating the agreement if we don't, if we can't get, get to where we need to be, and we will enforce those.
Okay, thank you. One more question, in similar vein, is economic viability. So if the, I don't know, what, what should I call them, a proposer and what's the other?
Concept.
Concept, okay.
Yeah.
I coined that, by the way. So, so if, you know, you have the proposer, you have the concept company, what if the concept company, like, because we all know that the concession business in general is one of the riskiest businesses there is, what if they fall on hard times? What if, you know, they go, then does the proposer, is the proposer responsible to maintain that continuity, or would they come in with another, or would we go out for another bid?
They are responsible, and we would work with them. Ideally, we wouldn't be in that situation. We're pretty optimistic that with our rising passenger numbers, that we're going to, we're not going to see failure like that, but it's possible. There are a lot of other proposers in the wings who would like to come in if-
So to speak.
If the, right, so I will give you one example, which is, the proposer can walk away. So during COVID, we had one of our entities operating the pre-security spots in, in Terminal B walk away. So we now have a whole flanks of different entities that would come in if we needed them to.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Nope, thank you very much. Don't go anywhere. Public comment.
Okay, we do have public comments, and our first speaker is Jarvis.
Morning.
And first off, I want to say thank you for letting me speak. First Board meeting speaking, so a little bit nervous, but let's get to it. So I represent M2 Concepts, which is the brand that bid it for Package 7, and we was the brand that was overlooked due to the default of Famous Familia. And to the Chair and what he was saying earlier, the, I don't think as the operators, Famous Familia operated the operation before, and they defaulted, but we are licensing their brand, and we're going to be the new operators in 2, and we scored the highest on the evaluation. So we're just wondering if y'all would reconsider and looking at that to see about awarding M2 Concepts that package over Rylo. And I know Rylo scored second, but with us being the highest scorer, we was the only one that scored the highest and wasn't awarded the package. So I do want y'all to look in there. I believe I emailed you all before the meeting. You might have it in your email about the different things. One, like I said, we scored the highest. Two, we was not aware of the default of Famous Familia at all. We did not know when we licensed the brand, the brand said they was in good standing. We did everything. We did not have any information from the airport to say that if you bid this brand, you would be disqualified. So we went ahead and did our proposal, and we bid it, and ultimately, we won, so we're kind of sad to see that it might be given to somebody else.
Are the, are you, I'm sorry, you-
No, you're fine, I'm fine.
Are, are the former operators of Famous Familia, are they- Are the former operators of Famous Familia, are they in any way involved with the business at this point, or have you completely consumed the business?
No, they're not involved. So we licensed, they're only involved in a license agreement for us to use their brand, but they're not involved in any other operations. It will be 100% operated by M2 Concepts.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Gina.
Hi, my name is Gina Graziano, and I am Rilo Management, which is a small business operating in San Francisco Airport as well as Oakland. We're really excited to win two of the packages, hopefully, if it stands. And we've had great relationships over the 10 years at Sacramento, at San Francisco Airport, working with the airport directors. So we're really excited for this opportunity here at Sacramento to bring two great local brands into Sacramento Airport, One Speed Pizza, hopefully, as well as Sidewalk Juice. We've had a great relationship all the way through with both of our different locations that we're at, and we just hope you consider us for these locations here. As a small business, we employ many people. We will work with the labor pool here and any displaced employees. And we have all of our old employees that have worked with us for over 10 years. So we do build within our company and give opportunity to our employees. So hopefully, you will consider us. We have no defaults anywhere. We are great with our paying. So thank you for considering us, and I hopefully it'll, yeah, questions.
Supervisor Cerna.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for being here and offering your comments. What's the history with organized labor?
I don't, currently at SFO, we have a family that runs our location. They've been with us for 10 years. We're open to organizing here. We're not stopping it. We leave it up to our employees. We've always allowed the unions to come in and car check everybody or do whatever they have to do. We've never stopped any of that, and we will open our doors here as well. We're looking to work with them. We've signed off on our side of the agreement and just never got it back from them. So we've never, we've always just stayed very neutral, and that's.
That's good to hear.
We're looking to do that here.
I'll speak for myself, but it should be somewhat obvious from my line of questioning. One of the values for me, especially at the airport, is the history that we have with labor peace and also with ensuring that employees have representation out there. So while it may not have been a formal consideration, so to speak, in terms of the process that got us to this point, it is for at least this member of the board and maybe others. So I'll just leave it there. Thank you.
No, I understand that. My husband was a union operator for many years, so we would consider that 100%.
So I just, because of something that you said, I just have a follow-up question. So you're familiar with, you've worked with unions in the past, your husband has been involved with unions and all that.
On the East Coast, yeah.
You're familiar with that there's different ways of organizing, and card check is just one of those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll allow them to come in. We have no problem being union here at Sacramento and starting off at the right foot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, I'd like you to read this entire name, please.
He's just walking out.
Not the first time. Good morning, no, not at all. I would save you the trouble and just call me Tosin for short, but just to amuse the audience, it's Aloua Tosin Kasali. Thank you.
Welcome.
Just, again, just wanted to make a, you know, just a quick comment. You know, I understand here representing a lot of people who've put a lot of time and effort into becoming Sacramento and understanding the ecosystem that is Sacramento. And again, just thank you to the airport for their support and over the years and the partnership. Again, we're here, we're happy to be here. We've been awarded packages that I think will represent what the tenants of the RFP and the research that was done ahead of time to be the employer of choice and the operator of choice at your airport for Packages One and Six. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jason.
Morning, supervisors. How you doing?
Good.
I just want to take a brief moment to just show appreciation. I'm sorry, I'm Jason Poole with Midtown Spirits, representing Dave Beck here and also our operating partners that were going hopefully into the airport here shortly after your vote. Just want to take a moment to express our gratitude for the concessions team, for the outreach that they did to the small businesses here in Sacramento. My personal experience with this whole process was sitting on my couch at about 6:00 in the morning, watching KCRA, finding out about an event that's going to be happening in two hours. So going from the couch to possibly operating the package number eight is pretty extreme from couch to 15 years in the airport. So very, very excited about the efforts that they've put in, and we're very excited to be a partner with them in that effort. So thank you all very much for your confidence in what they do, and we're excited about the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Poole.
Appreciate it.
Sonia.
Hi, my name is, are we hearing me? Am I too short? Okay, cool. My name's Sonia Carabel, and I'm with Unite Here Local 49, which is the union that represents food service workers at the airport. And I want to thank, you know, supervisors and staff who have, I've talked to throughout this whole process because this transition is really important for our membership. This transition, you know, poses a lot of risk to our members, and we've worked over the time that this bid has been out to try to minimize that risk. And we want to make sure that that transition happens as smoothly as possible for our, you know, hundreds of members that work at the airport and count on this job for their livelihood. And I'm here to say that choosing Rilo tonight for two packages would be a mistake. They're currently in operation at Oakland and SFO, and what we've witnessed at those airports raises serious questions about their suitability at Sacramento Airport. At Oakland Airport, Rilo's agreement to operate a Vietnamese restaurant there called Thai Ho included a proposed menu where a pork banh mi sandwich would cost $9.50. So that was in their lease in 2019. When they opened three years later, they raised the price to $17.50, which is an 84% increase. Even with significant inflation during those years of the pandemic, the adjusted cost would be $10.87. So, and this is while Oakland Airport has a pricing policy that you're not supposed to have prices over 10% above street pricing. At that same outlet, workers reported food safety issues, including cooks prepping vegetables on top of trash cans, chicken marinating in containers on the floor, sauces stored uncovered under tables. And the Alameda County Department of Public Health found three violations of health standards there in fall 2023. So Rilo was recommended for package number seven here, as we've discussed, despite M2 Concepts receiving a higher score from the panel. We know there's been issues with their chosen brand, Famous Familia, in their role as a current operator, but those issues would not necessarily continue if M2 Concepts assumes operations and Famous Familia remains on as a brand. We're deeply concerned about Rilo as a concessionaire at our beloved Sacramento Airport. Rather than approving them today, we would suggest that you approve the packages except for Packages Five and Seven, which staff recommended be awarded to Rilo, and direct staff to investigate these issues and offer you an alternative at an upcoming meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Victoria Day, and I've worked as a server for SSP and Terminal A at the Sacramento Airport for five years. I love my job because I am able to create a lasting positive impression on both Sacramento natives and visitors alike. The union in SSP has also provided me a way to get ahead in life as an underprivileged youth. Please do not pick Rilo as a concessionaire. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica.
Hello, my name is Jessica Sevo. I've been with a company called SSP America in the airport for about nine years as a bartender. As you can see, SSP is not on the recommended list this afternoon or morning. And that's scary for me, as it is for 100 other employees that they employ at this moment. So what do we do? We look to our union, which is these guys over here. And our union provides for us benefits and our 401K, our pension, you know, just job security. It's allowed me the opportunity to be a single-income family for my family of three kids and a husband, and he gets to stay home with my little one. But most importantly for me is the medical that they provide. And my son, my oldest son, was experiencing some neurological issues, and we had Medi-Cal. And there was two pediatric neurologists in the entire 100 miles around the Sacramento area, and they told me there was nothing wrong with my son. And he had a two-and-a-half-hour-long seizure and almost died. Two months later, I was put on the healthcare for, through Unite Here, and they found out that he was having a seizure once every minute for hundreds and hundreds of times throughout the day. And that never would have been possible without the support of my union being strong and supporting us. And that's what we're here to do today, is to make sure that this transition for all of the employees at SMF is smooth and has them in the forefront. Because, you know, it's our jobs and our livelihood, and we need a strong backing for us. So thank you.
Thank you. Before we have the next speaker, could I have airport staff come up and specifically address a situation, because that's probably not unique. I mean, the specifics of the medical situation probably are, but as far as the apprehension of the employee, just address where we go from here on that concern.
Sure, absolutely. I really acknowledge that change is a scary time for us, for any of, anybody, and especially for people who rely on certain contracts for their livelihoods. I believe that the situation at the airport is such that not only do we need everybody who's there now, we need 70 more people. We need to increase the number of people at the airport by 23%. And so there is a huge value to the people who already work at the airport in that they have already gone through background checks, they have already been badged, they know the airport, sometimes they probably know our customers better than we do, our passengers. So the people who currently work in our concessions are going to be very valuable to those who are continuing to serve the airport as well as the new concessions. So the other thing I would mention is we do not take lightly the labor peace aspect or the so-called worker retention policy, employee retention policy. We will be making sure that everyone's complying with those, giving anyone who's in good standing the first shot at the jobs, as well as that they have the 90-day period within which they're employed with certainty.
Thank you, Ms. Nicol. Supervisor Cerna.
Thank you. Cindy, is there, is there any way that, should the board move forward today with staff's recommendation, that we could have a formal report back on progress in terms of what you just said, in terms of the interest and the advancement of labor, not just labor peace, but in terms of the net additional jobs that will come with the various packages, what the status would be in terms of those jobs actually being added to the membership of Local 49?
Certainly, yes. We'd be happy to do that. You know, there are a couple of proposers for whom we don't know their status or, you know, who they'll be, you know, if there be, if they will be entering into labor peace agreements, we assume that they will be asked and that they will, we're requiring that they do so.
So that introduces another, perhaps, opportunity. Is there some way that the board can formally or otherwise express an interest that if they're not, you know, if they come to the opportunity through their package, that they understand that it is of great value, at least to some, perhaps all members of this board, that those employees be represented?
We will certainly be communicating that, and we will be watching closely to make sure.
I hope they're watching closely today, too.
Yes, exactly. I'm sure they are.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, Amir.
Good afternoon, morning. I'm Amr Dean. I'm the president of Unite Here Local 49, and just wanted to come here, and I'll be brief because I think a lot of what I wanted to say has been said and has been spoken about by the members and by you with your questions. So thank you very much. Local 49 has been, has represented the food service workers at the airport for, I think, close to 50 years. We have members who have worked there for 40 years. So by context, I'm 47, so she started when she was, when I was seven years old and has been there, taking care of the Sacramento Flyers for 40 years. It's really something special. And it is, you know, an indication of people's dedication to Sacramento. It's also an indication that, you know, this union has been there and has been working to make those good jobs that people can rely on and live and raise their families like Jessica spoke about. And, you know, we want to make sure that those jobs continue, but that they also continue to be really good jobs. And in the early days of the history of food service at the airport, it was one company. It was HMS Host for many, many years. And then the airport administration decided that there needed to be some variety and some local presence, and we welcome that, but I think it's been spoken about. That creates a great deal of anxiety amongst the workers because it is about their jobs and it is also about the quality of their jobs, and it's about their medical, and it's about their retirement, and it's about all of those things. And I did want to really take this opportunity to thank you and to thank the airport. I think that this, this bid really put the workers, you know, it's exemplified by your questions and by the responses at the airport, that the workers really have been on the agenda. We feel that and we appreciate that. Thank you for that. They thank you for that.
Mr. Dean, can you wrap up your comments, please?
Yes, I will. But it's not over. There's still many steps coming up, and we'd like to ask you to continue to keep the workers on the agenda front and center because all of this anxiety really is reflected with the Flyers, and we want to make sure that it's all taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Kevin.
I'm Kevin Wesley. I'm COO of High Flying Foods. I'd like to thank the commissioners for this opportunity and thank the airport for a really complete and thoroughly communicated RFP process. We brought with us Glenn Myers, our founder, Cole Myers, our president, and Carla Whitmar, our executive vice president of development. We have worked on this project for about five years. We were working with the airport prior to the pandemic. I would also like to say that we have experience working with unions and we have experience in transition in airports, and we've already met with Local 49 to talk about how we might participate in managing that transition to the best of our ability. We look forward to your blessing today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Include your public comments.
Okay, I'd like to have representative from Rilo come back to the podium if possible. Thank you. I believe Mr. Cerna has questions.
Thank you. So you heard some of the speakers reference what their perception is of the experience at other airports in terms of some food safety issues and other matters. Can you, I wanted to give you an opportunity to respond to that.
Thank you for giving me that opportunity, and I did bring a booklet. We have perfect health scores out at SFO as well as Oakland, so I don't know where they're coming up with that information. I don't want to go against them, but it's completely not true. And I do have my health scores of a 93 and a 98 for the last two years, so I don't know where that's coming from. We are willing to work with the union here, so it's not that we're not, we will take all their displaced employees, so, but the statements about the health is false, 100%. And I do have a booklet here showing all of my SFO health passing on the first time, as well as Oakland, which scores the 93 and a 98, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And then can you also speak to the purported violation of pricing policy?
We were comped, all of our locations have to go through a rigorous comping with the airport staff, so we put our prices, and I'm sure we'll have that here, out for the, and it's only 10% above street pricing. So what they're stating that a $9.00 banh mi sandwich was in my proposal is false information. Our airport staff, and I also have that in my little booklet. have that in my little booklet, is our approved airport pricing, which is the same airport pricing that's up on our menus today. We never raise a price without the airport permission.
Okay, great. Thank you. To the chair, can I ask our airport director to come back up? Thank you. Hi, Cindy. On that last matter, how does the airport check to make sure that food and beverage concessionaires are not exceeding pricing policy as it relates to street pricing?
You know, this is one of the unsung things about my staff. My staff conduct audits all the time, and, you know, they will be on it. They do check, there are a couple examples. They're probably smiling over there, because I frequently ask them about other locations. But, you know, we will, for anyone who's operating here, who has a restaurant in the area, that's an easy comparable. Sometimes it's a little harder if someone's not operating a store or a restaurant here, but we will agree on what those are, and we will be on it, watching them. And as Gina mentioned, their proposal is street plus 10%, and we will hold them to that. As I said earlier, we have provisions for progressive sanctions, et cetera, that we will use.
And is the audit, is that a kind of a secret shopper kind of audit?
It can be. It doesn't, sometimes doesn't have to be really that secret for pricing. But, you know, certainly, the other thing I'd like to mention is, we will be working with EMD on making sure that food handling, food safety, cleanliness, all of those things are above board also.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
All right, then we'll come back to the board. Nobody's punched up yet. I'm sure there will be comments. There we go. I'll just say a few things. First of all, I want to commend airport staff. This has been the best process I have seen in general for RFPs, RFQs, as far as transparency, openness, thoughtfulness, really, you know, putting a lot behind it. It wasn't taken lightly. The last time that we went through this exercise at the airport, it wasn't anything like this as far as public open, but also the emphasis on local. You know, it wasn't that long ago you could get off the airport and not know if you're in St. Louis or anywhere else. Actually, that's not true, because St. Louis has got a lot of barbecue. But, you know, my point is, is that I've always thought that this airport should be, have a sense of place that represents Sacramento, and anybody that gets off an airplane should be able to see Sacramento. And this continues in that vein, in that legacy, and I want to thank you for that. And as I said, this has not been a short time in coming. I believe, Ms. Nicol, our very first meeting when you came to Sacramento County was on this issue years ago. So this has been something that has been well thought out. There will be those who are not happy with the outcome, those who are, that's what the competitive process is unfortunately all about. One thing that I would ask, and I think that this should be inherent in all RFPs, RFQs, particular RFPs, is that we afford the opportunity to meet with or give the opportunity for those proposers who were not successful to do a postmortem, if they would like, to take a look at, you know, why, you know, it ended up the way it did. And it makes them better, but it makes us better, and be able to get their feedback as well through that process. So I would ask that you, you know, give that opportunity to the other presenters. And you're not unique there. I ask that for, I'm going to be asking that for most RFPs that the county puts forward. Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So I too want to thank the airport staff for the rigor that they've applied in this process. And of course, as was mentioned, you know, there's always going to be winners and losers when it comes to a competitive process like this. But I think, hopefully, everyone in the audience, those that have proposed and are being recommended, those that propose that aren't, and certainly our labor partners at the airport, understand through our questioning this morning that we are not taking lightly the fact that we want to maintain and extend the tradition of not just labor peace, as I've mentioned earlier, but also ensuring that there's as much opportunity to organize and have represented labor serving the traveling public at SMF as possible. So I am satisfied with the answers that I've heard this morning, and feel that this is going to be a very successful future for SMF. I'm very delighted to see that we have some deep-rooted local vendors that will be out at the airport. I have to say, most notably for me, New Alvisha, since I am a fan of their beer. And so that'll be nice to see them out there should the board pass that. And with, pass this, and with that, I will make the motion to adopt the staff recommendation.
We have a motion by Supervisor Serna, second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you.
Your next item, 41, are your nominations. You're continuing to February 27th, the Children's Coalition, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls Youth, Sacramento County Youth Commission. Continuing to March 12th, the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Continuing to March 26th, Building Board of Appeals, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Kasumnas, County Service Area 4C, Delta, the Human Services Coordinating Council, and the Veterans Advisory Commission. For your first matter, you have the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to March 12th.
Thank you. Kasumnas Area Community Planning Advisory Council. For Supervisor Frost, I have to continue to March 26th. And Supervisor Hume?
Same.
Thank you. Elk Grove Kasumnas Cemetery District. I'll start with Supervisor Kennedy.
Please continue to March 26th.
And then Supervisor Hume?
Reappoint Peggy Forseth Andrews.
And then we have the Fair Oaks Cemetery District. Mr. Desmond?
Please reappoint Carolyn Flood and Albert Neufeld. Continue the remainder to March 12th.
Thank you. First five commission. Mr. Kennedy?
Chiefs nominate Alicia Williams.
Public Health Advisory Board.
Chiefs nominate David Hughes and Nia Jones, and continue the remainder to March 26th.
Thank you. Sacramento County Mental Health Board. For Supervisor Frost, we are continuing to March 26th. And then Mr. Hume?
Nominate Laura S. Abemus.
Good choice.
Sacramento Environmental Commission.
Chiefs nominate Jonathan Gage Marchini.
Thank you. And then Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission.
Please continue to February 27th.
And that concludes your nominations. And now we're at county executive comments.
Thank you, Flo. Supervisors, I just wanted to bring up one item. Some time ago, you had asked us to kind of share on our sustainability efforts and things that the counties are doing. So John Longren, along our county sustainability manager, with assistance of numerous staff and departmental staff, launched the county's first sustainability dashboard. The dashboard consists of the board's climate emergency declaration and direction to achieve carbon neutrality. We also launched this to really show and foster our transparency and demonstrate accountability towards our progress. It's a really easy site to use. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, it's showing the progress that we made on the 20-plus action items that we have. And I encourage folks to look at it. It's at www-green.saccounty.gov. And thank you for making my first meeting a very easy one. I'm sure it'll change.
Okay, any comments from members of the board? Seeing none. The items 45 through 53 are received and filed, and we do have an adjournment. Does any other board member have an adjournment? Okay. Lauren Hammond, the first black woman elected to Sacramento City Council in a local force of public service and community empowerment, died peacefully in her home on January 18th, 2024. She was 68. A graduate of C. Kamakachi High School, Lauren attended Sacramento City College, and then earned a degree in government from California State University. She worked for 22 years in the California State Senate, beginning in special services and ending as the senate's coordinator for the American Disability Act. Lauren began life in public office with her 1997 election to the Sacramento City Council, where she represented District 5 for 13 years. She was only the second black woman to serve on the council. Lauren prided herself in taking up issues impacting the community, such as disproportionate number of African Americans pulled over by local law enforcement, and establishing beneficial partnerships, securing funding for projects that led to significant change in the community, specifically Oak Park. Among Lauren's lasting legacies will be her determination to reaching out to and mentoring and encouraging a new class of Sacramento women seeking public office. Throughout her career, Lauren contributed to women's leadership with her bid for state assembly, governor-appointed service to the California Gambling Control Commission, consulting in public policy strategy, and Sacramento Chapter leadership of the National Women's Political Caucus, where she was serving as president at the time of her passing. She often was the only black woman in these groups, but found common ground with others who also wanted to see more diversity. Lauren led an active and vibrant life outside of work. She loved people in gatherings, grilling in pool parties, golfing and traveling. She will be particularly missed at the annual City-County Golf Classic. She was an enthusiastic sports fan, could be a loud spectator, especially cheering on family and friends at their events. In fact, those of us who knew Lauren well knew that she could be loud under any circumstances. Lauren loved music. She played her collection of African drums, sang Christmas carols with heart, sometimes from the podium at the city council meetings, and she could really get a room going when she started to dance. Lauren is survived by her wife, Margaret Marr, siblings Marcia, David, Carol, and Kevin Hammond, her Aunt Fran Burton, and cousins Ruben, her niece and nephew Claire and Miles Hammond, her nieces Emily and Lindsay Powers, along with many of her nieces and nephews, her goddaughter Elena Bistro, and sister Lauren George, her adoring dog Finn, and many more extended family and friends. She will be remembered as an inspirational and iconic leader and community force, a loving wife and devoted sister, a badass auntie and grandmother, a loyal and resourceful friend, and an all-around fun person. She will be dearly missed by all who knew her and even those who never met her. Please join in celebrating Lauren's life. A public service will be held February 9th from 11 to 3:00 at the California State University Sacramento Union Ballroom at 6,000 J Street. Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn in the name of Lauren Hammond.